Call to order Bedford Township Planning Commission Regular Meeting, September 25th, 2019. Please stand for the pledge if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stephan, can you take the roll call?
Ms. Tinnverry.
Yeah, uh, here.
Mr. Zibek.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Here.
Mr. Grabber.
Here.
Stephan is a present, Mr. Fritz.
Here.
Chairman Anker.
Here. Next we will move on to the approval of the agenda. If there's nothing to add, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Next we move on to the approval of the minutes of the August 28th, 2019 meeting. I will entertain a motion for anyone that was here for that.
Support.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Next we move on to public comment. This is for anybody in the audience who would like to speak tonight. Seeing that we have none, we will move on to new business. The first is a request for a recommendation for tentative preliminary plat approval for Village Meadows Plats 5 and 6 on parcel number 5802-014-06702 located on Temperance Road east of Lewis Avenue. Karen, can you give us some background?
Uh, yes. Uh, the owner is Village Meadows Holding LLC. Uh, the spokesperson is Bryce Bankowski. Engineer is ESA. Uh, the plat description is the remaining 15.372 acre site is being proposed for development. Plat 5 consists of 12 lots and plat 6 13 lots for a total of 25 R3 single-family residential parcels. There's a total of 120 lots within Village Meadows and with the additional proposed 25 lots, there will be a total of 146 lots where there are two means of ingress egress off of Temperance Road. The proposed plats are an extension of the Village Meadows subdivision located on Temperance Road east of Lewis Avenue, which was approved on 8/19/2003. Um, the review considerations is the Monroe County Road Commission approved the tentative preliminary plats on 5/2/2019. The Monroe County Drain Commission approved the tentative preliminary plats on 8/27/2019. Manikin Smith Group has approved the tentative preliminary plats on 9/16/2019. And the Fire Department approved the plats on 9/5/2019. Eagle, as noted on the plan via an email from Bridget S. Carver dated July 24th, 2019, a site visit was conducted and there were no signs of regulated wetlands on the property and they will be accepting Bankowski Builders 2002 delineation for submission and the numbers included. It also is noted that a new joint permit application was submitted on April 25th, 2019 for plats 5 and 6 and includes a detention pond and the sanitary sewer crossing the wetland. A permit must be obtained prior to final preliminary plat approval. The following should be considered if tentative preliminary plat approval is recommended. Any and all issues outlined in the MRC, MCD, C, the Manikin Smith Group and the Bedford Township Fire Department letters should be addressed and a permit shall be obtained from Eagle prior to final preliminary plat approval.
Thank you, Karen. Do we have a representative for Bankowski?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Bryce Bankowski.
And just need your address as well for the record.
Uh, 9226 Village Meadows Drive.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to add to the summary of Karen?
Uh, no, Karen, about covered it, I think.
I see that you already are started building plots 3 and 4, correct?
Correct, yeah. Uh, plat 3's in, we're almost done with all the homes in plat 3. Uh, and plat 4 is under construction. Um, should be wrapped up in the next month or so.
I drove by this evening and it's looking really nice.
Thank you.
Bryce, this is the last of the flats you have there at that location?
Yeah, this is the last of the properties that I own, yeah.
Are there any other questions or concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Jenkins?
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend tentative preliminary plat approval for plats, Village Meadows Plats 5 and 6. Subject to any and all issues outlined in the Monroe County Road Commission, Monroe County Drain Commission, Manikin Smith Group and the Bedford Township Fire Department letters shall be addressed and a permit shall be obtained from Eagle prior to final preliminary plat approval.
Support.
All right, Mr. Stephan, can you take the roll, please?
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Ms. Tinnverry?
Yes.
Mr. Zibek?
Yes.
Mr. Grabber?
Yes.
Stephan votes yes. Mr. Fritz?
Yes.
Chairman Anker?
Yes. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Next we want to move on to item B, which is a sign ordinance discussion. Karen, can you give us a background?
Yeah.
This is a rather large ordinance and we're not going to be able to make all the decisions this evening that will have to be taken into consideration, but we're going to at least discuss those that we have pointed out at this point. As has been stated at previous meetings, we have found that there may be need to further review some of our existing ordinances. As you know, signs have been a topic of discussion for several months, if not years. The planning department is providing you with a copy of the signed ordinance and are encouraging you to read the ordinance in preparation to discuss it at the September 25th meeting. The planning department has identified several areas for discussion and is by no means the limit of areas for discussion. The areas that are identified are those that have been habitual waiver requests, ordinance enforcement department repeated violations, or as a result of comments or questions that have been received. Following is a list of areas identified for discussion, which does not necessarily mean an amendment should be considered. Um, those that we identified are the monument sign base, area calculation, considerations to allow of a reader board signs, wall sign placement below roof line, grand opening weekly event signs, waivers go to the BZA rather than to the planning commission, setbacks for your multiple residential, and uh, those are the ones that we have outlined in here and were identified with the ordinance that we provided to you. I, you know, we can discuss those or we can move on and get those that maybe others have an interest in further reviewing and leave it up to the commission on how we want to approach this.
I know it's quite lengthy. I was reading it today more thoroughly and there's a lot of things that we grant frequently that I think we should try to get so we don't have to make people come to get a variance. I mean, we can kind of go on the list that you have here and then if there's any additional ones that we kind of keep it in some orderly way.
Um, if you, if you noticed, um, we included several different signs, photos of several different signs at the back of the pack that do not meet the requirements of our ordinance. Some of them are very attractive signs, but I think when we originally looked at that we had to have a base that was the minimum of the width of the sign. Uh, we wanted to eliminate uh, those that weren't of decorative material, I, such as putting a, some four by four posts in and putting some plywood up. So, um, we, we went with at that time that the, the base being a monument had to be the entire width of the sign. And as you can see with some of these photos, some of these signs are very attractive and they don't have that base, the full width. They have used decorative columns. Um, some of them are woods, some of them are stone. Some of them where the bases aren't necessarily wider, they've used material that would be the same as the sign. They just don't extend from horizontally the width of the sign. So we thought maybe we would take a look in, the language we have now has stifled some creativity in that, um, we haven't allowed for, you know, we're giving them a rectangle even with our calculations. 50 square feet rectangle measurements. We haven't allowed, if we have taken in a sign in that was oval, oval shape, a round shape, we still calculated it from the top of the oval and the width of the oval, leaving areas that we were counting as signage that there is actually nothing to count. So, that would have been the area of calculation. So we thought, you know, maybe we want to look at what other options we might have to allow for more creativity, but yet keep it in a decorative nature and not just allow for signs to come in that doesn't have some sort of decorative aspect to it.
I, I actually really like, like the one that says the Heights Fellowship. Um, but my question is how do you, how would you word it to where you, because that would be a two-base sign. It's so they don't come in with two four-by-fours and then...
We may have to use columns rather than...
Decorative columns with stone or, or, yes, Joe?
You know, I think the perfect example when Mr. Decker was in here a few weeks ago, you know, and didn't realize it and built something beautiful and took it all down, you know, the sign four by eight or whatever, but, um, for just the verbiage, but if somebody wants to, you know, and I said this before, you know, when we did the one on Lewis Avenue with the strip mall, that one there doesn't affect anybody because it doesn't affect the neighbor because he owns 300 foot and all the strip in there. And I think you got to take into consideration with, if, um, let's say they were complaining last week about the coin shop and, and stuff of it, David K. Jewellers. It's affecting the road next door. It might be affecting the next neighbor. So, I mean, I think every one of those individually are, are so different because if it's a strip mall with 300 foot with two entrances, it's affecting nobody, nobody there. So I, I don't know how you, what the verbiage and if that's a, you know, the attorney's language and stuff, but I do like it decorative. I like it coming in front of us. But I do like when they put stuff around them, you know, the timber framing, the drive it, the, uh, whatever it is. So, and I, and I don't know how to fix that either. It's been a problem, I think, what you say, Dennis, for 20 years, 30 years?
20, easy.
Yeah.
At least.
Yeah, so we have to, um, and I was at the last township meeting or one before and they were, guy was just standing up screaming about the signs and, and people were saying, "Well, we don't do nothing unless it's, somebody brings it their attention." You know, now you got this guy saying, "Well, who did that to me and I'm going to turn on him," you know, I just think it, if it's not hurting anybody and it's not blocking anything, we have to come up with a better way to, these guys are advertising and trying to make a living too. That is, like these pictures, I mean, I think some of them are beautiful. And I don't, I don't know how to get there to be honest, but I think there's definitely needs to be. Marty knows on that, is there verbiage in there, Marty, that you don't say four by four or, or it's just got to come in front of them? I'm not sure how you do that.
Well, I, I think the, the ordinance as it exists is, it talks about aesthetics. Not, not, a measuring stick is not whether it impacts a neighbor. It's more of a, a community-wide aesthetics, good-looking, because sooner or later it's going to impact somebody and how do you measure who it impacts the most or if it's impacts at a certain level that it triggers the ordinance. I don't know how you would measure that. Uh, I, I think the goal was is to create a uniform size of the sign. I guess they must have pictured, and it's been many, many years ago, monument signs with the base, the same width as the sign to get away from the pedestal signs. And it's been quite a battle over the years to eliminate the pedestal signs. And I think the ordinance plus the ordinance enforcement department and the planning department have been successful in eliminating many, many pedestal signs. And the heights, I believe, was one of the things that the group who was behind the ordinance more than 20 years ago was trying to get away from. They thought that monument signs limited to the height, I think it's, what is it, five feet, uh, was something that they wanted to strive for at that time. Maybe, maybe, uh, that thought, uh, has passed and maybe there's, there's new thoughts and, and goals in this community, but I think you, I mean, using the word aesthetically pleasing, that of itself is, is pretty subjective and broad and vague and it, it leaves it to individual thoughts on that. So, whatever you come up with, I, I'd hope that you could make it more objective. In other words, you can understand what the ordinance is describing, whether it's dimensions or columns or, or whatever. So, uh, it has to be something that the planning department can, language that they can specifically apply to the design rather than just saying, "Is it aesthetically pleasing or it doesn't impact a neighbor?"
What is our goal here tonight? Is it just to give, talk about it and give recommendations or?
Input so we can fur- further conduct our review, give us some direction on what we're seeking. Uh, in many cases, what we do is we make reference to other ordinances in other communities to see how they address their signs, um, to maybe achieve what we're, our desire is by looking at other language from other, other ordinances. So, um, we would probably start there. And just, just to touch base a little bit, if you take a look at, um, when we're doing the calculations on the backside of the first sheet, the Oakdale Estates, the sign that has the, the stone columns. When I'm, in this particular case, with the way our ordinance is written, if we were to calculate signage, we would take from the top of the tree, the crescent above, the top half to the bottom, and we would measure from the top to the bottom, from side to side. So you would have that area on both sides of that, that we would measure a signage that is not there. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think that's eliminated a lot of creativity because why would you make your sign smaller if you can't use that square footage?
So that's a classic example of where we're looking to possibly amend our language so it doesn't stay from top, you know, vertically from the most vertical.
Have you true square footage or something like that?
Right. I think true square footage would be reasonable. Then you could have some of the neat little cutouts and designs like that.
I, I think that's a good idea. The question would be, do you include the area, the face area of the columns in the sign? And because people can become quite creative with, with the structure itself and incorporating it into the sign. So, yeah, true square footage or area. And then you got to say, "Okay, what about the supports? Is that part of the sign that we're calculating?"
We, we do that now, don't we, currently, kind of?
What we do now is we actually measure the signage. Our bases that we allow, um, of course vary depending on the zoning district, as do the, the calculations for the sign, not the calculations, but the amount of square footage. We allow, say you're allowed to have a 50 square foot sign. You can have up to a 50 square foot base. That would also include the columns up the side. It would not be part of the signage. It would be considered part of your base.
Could we refer to it, maybe is it like a physical face or?
Support.
And that, that would take consideration the, the columns and the actual, you know, face, the, uh, I guess the X, Y dimensions of, of that sign itself. Something to narrow that down. That, that would be appropriate. And still accommodate some of these more decorative type signs.
I also think putting size minimums and maximums wouldn't be necessarily a bad idea. If they do a column that we can say, you know, you got to be at least eight inches. That way it's not a little four by four and it can't be more than whatever the number would be.
Well, and, and for that too, I mean, I'm sure there could be verbiage such as, you know, no structural substrates are to be exposed on a sign and it must be, you know, standardized, some veneer. Finished building material.
Well, the Kirby Nelson looks pretty nice though, too. That's timber frame.
You know, and, and finish, some kind of coating could be, you know, if a near stone, it could be paint. It could be, um, you know, some kind of finish. I guess we'd have to explore a little bit the definition itself, but, um, so we don't have, you know, structural material or framing material exposed on that, that sign.
Joe?
I got a question here. If, um, like some of these, if we like these, could we go out there and take a, look at the sign where the verbiage is and then measure what the wood is and see? Because you know, when you're building something, you have a, obviously that wouldn't look good if it was six foot wide of wood.
Right.
And see if, if it'll fit into what that is. And maybe we look at that and say, "That's a great structure, but it doesn't work because of the square footage we're allowed." And maybe we up that from 50 to 70 or something, you know, like that, because you don't want it too wide. You don't want it. But aesthetically, man, I think any community would like the timber frame or the one below it.
Yeah.
So we give them with the four by eight sign, we give them enough that they can do brick or wood or something that's still...
So, so if I'm hearing correctly, a, a maximum outside dimension of the sign and then a maximum square footage of the physical X, Y dimension?
Well, if it's...
A combination of those two have to fall within that criteria.
If the sign's four by eight and then, what is it right now? How much can they have around a total of?
If you're allowed to have a 32 square foot sign, you are allowed to have up to 32 square feet of base, which does include...
Let's see if that number's, maybe that should be 38, you know? Look at one of these signs and say, "That's really good. It's really not out of place." Back into something that looks nice. Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I...
Because me just sitting here going, "Okay, let's up it or let's lower it."
I, yeah, I, I wouldn't be opposed to, uh, increasing the, you know, outside dimension of that sign, the total area, and then maybe decrease or keep the same, the, you know, the physical size if you add up the, uh, the square footage of the, the physical sign itself. And that might, uh, eliminate some of these issues.
Don't want it to look out of place too.
Right, right.
And the reason why we did that is we wanted to allow for some creativity. If you wanted to have your columns on the side or one column.
Of course.
And then...
Right.
What we would consider the true base. It, we tried to put some language in there that would allow for that. But still we're coming up with rectangle on top of a rectangle, basically.
Jenkins pointing at me?
Go ahead. Um, one of the problems I have with is, is the reference to monument signs. So we get a dimension, we give them the dimensions which are rectangular and we end up with a rectangular sign. And I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't just eliminate the monument sign reference and call it freestanding sign.
What, what page do you want, Dennis?
You want the whole thing?
No, just, I just want to mark it.
Page 2216.6.10.
Okay.
Yeah. And by calling it a freestanding sign with some other criteria, I think you get a little bit more creativity there. But the monument sign already tells me you want a flat rectangular sign.
But doesn't freestanding, can that just mean on a pole though, too?
Well, two poles.
Well, it could be freestanding on one pole.
We can massage the language.
We could because typically we refer to freest- a pole sign would be a pylon sign is what, what we, we use.
I know, but aren't we trying to get away from the public interpreting words differently than we'd, I mean, I hear that from the ordinance department, it's difficult to enforce ordinances because we think of it as one way, they read it a different way.
Can you give examples on that, Marty, when you're doing ordinance?
The definitions, correct.
Ken?
We could give examples of the preferred materials that we feel are aesthetically preferred. Uh, as far as providing pictures of examples, I don't know. I've never seen that before. But we could probably try and describe some typical preferred designs or shapes, maybe.
And that's where I think having even a minimum size, because then you wouldn't be able to just put up a little pole, you know?
Single pole.
Correct.
Right. It'd have to be two pole support, two support structures.
Well, even, I, I mean, you could have one column that would, that could look nice. I mean, I haven't seen an example, but in theory, I mean, if it's a nice stone base and it kind of cantilevered, uh, almost like the for-sale signs for the fancy realtors.
And the monument signs are one, theoretically, one support or one pole, too. So, depends on how wide it is.
Right.
Yeah, it could be the width and one support.
They have freestandings already in this, in this ordinance. In different applications, probably, but, what I'm saying.
It says freestanding signs shall be monument signs.
The one thing about, like we have it now, uh, it gives some, you know, different options to the people. But at some point, if we go too far, then it's going to be up to the board to decide. This year it'll be this board, next year it'll be the next board and we've had that problem before, I understand, you know, it just...
Um, several years ago, we had, uh, in the design, architectural design features of buildings. The ordinance doesn't give any examples and it shouldn't, but we also created the architectural design manual that goes hand in hand with the different zoning ordinances. And we could incorporate some of these sign designs in that manual just to give people an idea of what we're looking for.
Is it more or less like a industry standard that we can incorporate in there?
Not necessarily industry, because the architectural design standard was basically based on features around this community. So, but I mean, you could, whatever sign designs, like the ones that are included in a package, you could include in there. This, this is what we're looking for. Try to get close to it.
Tom?
You know, I've not paid that much attention until I was looking at these pictures of the monument signs around here, but based on width and height and whatever and support, columns or whatever, are most of them that we have that might have some support columns tucked in the base and under the sign to keep it looking like a monument? And yet, you know, when I think monument, I think cemetery. And that's what we've created. Uh, it's just, and they have gotten creative over the years instead of just a slab of granite. But, um, I noticed in these pictures, some of the comments that you all made about, uh, the signs. The sign was within the pillars or the post or the support. And like I said, I, I was on that original sign ordinance thing and I guess we never really decided where it would go. My second comment, and even though it's not pertaining right now to this, is reader boards are hot right now. What happens when they're not? You know, what do you have to do? Reconfigure everybody's square footage of sign? Like the place that you were referring to, um, on Lewis Avenue, have a large reader board. The churches have large reader boards. I can understand that because they're constantly changing activities. But what do, what are we going to do with a bunch of red blank reader boards down the road? I'm not saying we need to address that now, but where will we put that? Will we just let everybody build a bigger sign and re-insert it in the monument minus the reader board? It just was a thought that I thought I'd bring up. I don't want to muddy this up. It's bad enough as it is. I mean, it's not bad. It's di- as difficult as it can be right now.
Joe?
You know, one of the things that I've seen over the years is, um, the people making the signs and the people, the businesses asking for it, they don't feel what we have is, is big enough. I would like to see them a little bigger so they can have some creativity. Um, Gary Harold comes in here and he said time and time again, "I just can't," you know, a lot of them, and not without a crazy, "Maybe we up that square footage," and maybe we do. Gary Harold comes in here and he said time and time again, I just can't, you know, a lot of them, and not without a crazy, maybe we up that square footage, or maybe we do, that um, still have a limit on it, but give them a little bit more to work with. And I, and I agree with Tom on, I just think a cemetery, more sure with the monument, you know, it's just. I like what Dennis said too, don't put it in the ordinance, have some pictures, if that's okay Marty, like that, I think that's kind of a something, it's not part of it that you could do, is that, do you have an issue with that?
Well, that would be preferable. What I fear is just being too open, too undefined, and something, a sign design that has to come to some panel to review whether it looks good, or whether it falls within the ordinance. My goal, and I'm sure ordinance enforcement, as Nancy said, would be, it needs to have objective terms to it, so the people reviewing the application can decide it fits, or it doesn't fit within the ordinance. Having them come in and say, do you like this, or how's this look? I don't see that as a workable ordinance. So that's gonna be the difficult part of this.
But if we up the square footage and it's still, they can look at it.
Square footage is, can be measured, so that's easy.
I, I think it should be very specific on what you're allowed, and even maybe put in the type of material that you can use, and then if you want a variance, you'd have to go to be for the board to get the variance. Kinda like what we're doing now for the LED signs, you know? But if we increase what we're allowed, they might not have as many questions about them, so.
I think the one reason we went for the monument sign, I wasn't part of it then, but is to get them down so they're not so big. You know, huge, you know, you look and all you see is signs, so. Like in somewhere along the line, figured out that this measurement was the doable, you can see it. And there again, through the, just in the last two years, a lot of people want them bigger, but where do you stop getting bigger?
I think the, measuring the square footage for the actual square footage is a good idea, cause that still keeps it a good size, but then, and if it's a little bit bigger, like if we didn't, one of my ideas was based on, if it's a strip mall type thing, if you have more than five units in your strip mall, you're allowed eight foot versus the seven foot, or, I'm just throwing out ideas. Or if it's a strip mall, you can't have, uh, if it's multiple units, you can't have an LED board, because it's really hard to read uh, multiple units with a LED board.
We plan to discuss that, the next one, next item that we discuss, um, the reader boards, because we do have just that to discuss.
That's what I was thinking when we were, when we were discussing the, the Red Star, the sign of the Red Star. If they would've went with LED, that would've been, I don't think it would've worked out very well.
And we do have a multi-unit um, in, in the township, that had a, a freestanding sign, a monument sign that identified the, the plaza. They came in and sought an approval for an LED reader board, which eliminated all identification of the tenants. And now, as it scrolls, I could pass that sign fifteen times and never hit the one tenant that I was interested in finding. So, we've had that discussion, should we not allow reader boards in multi-units? Or maybe limit it to just a bar, where if Karen's Cafe is having a special, I could just put something in there for that, and then each tenant get, you know, they still would have their identification.
Right.
On the sign, but the reader board would be much smaller, rather than trying to, now, when you take a look at something like Old School House Commons, they're at a disadvantage, because they have no identification on the outside, other than, it's been there for years, it's a very tall, just small, if you're passing by, you really can't read it, but it is aesthetically appealing for that structure.
Where's that at?
Old School House Commons, you've probably not even noticed the sign that they have next to the building, that is tall, and it has little hanging placards that identify those tenants inside the building, because they have no outside identification, other than that small placard, and then the, they came in for their LED um, message board, which, which may serve them well, because there is no other identification to show, or it may not. If I have Karen's Cafe in there, and it's looking at everybody else's as I'm driving by, they may not realize I'm in there. So, it's one of those things that we have talked about, are reader boards really doing the service to multi-units, that when they come in, they, there may not be, like we've said, it, they may not serve them well, and we may not want to allow them. Well, right now, that's what we do, um, we have done in the past, which we haven't been doing lately. If we have allowed reader boards, we have also limited, because you're coming for an approval, a waiver stating that if we allow you to have a reader board, we're not going to allow you as a multi-tenant, or even one, to have any other temporary signs on your site. You can advertise that, um, specials, you don't have to have signs that come in, the wire signs or whatever, stating that you have specials going on, because you have the opportunity to do that on the reader board. So, we have kind of gotten away from that, um, a little bit, but we may want to rethink that, if you are going to have a reader board, then you're not. One that we did that with was Kroger Plaza. They do have a reader board off Sterns Road, it says Sterns Road Shops, or something like that. Um, I don't know if they're utilizing it, but that was one of the stipulations. Those multi-units don't have, and if you've noticed, they don't, you may get an occasion at certain times of the year, that accountants are, might have a little sign, but you won't find that they're, they have, each unit has their own signs up front for specials. So, that was one of the stipulations.
I actually like what you said, just, they can have in, a reader board on multi-unit things, but it has to be part of, like, the square footage, and it just be a smaller one, where it still can do their, their flipping through for their specials. But then at the same time, it also shows everything that's part of that development too, so it's kind of a, it'd be good for the, the, each unit, and for the people trying to find what's in those units.
Each unit there at Plaza, they have their own sign though.
I'm sorry?
They have their own sign, just not the, the special board or whatever.
At Kroger Plaza?
Yeah.
They, they do have their own sign, their own hall sign, but they, placed off the road, um, they don't have any identification on the road.
Okay, yeah.
So.
I do think that we should, how, kind of how we've been doing with the LED boards, if it's, if we're gonna go with that, is have the no flashing, no scrolling, five second change, and dim at night, as part of the ordinance, that way, it's very clear what.
What do you think about this allowing other temporary signs for specials?
If they have an LED board?
If they could get, put that message on the LED board as part of the message?
I think that makes sense.
What's the definition of temporary?
We allow for special, special event signs, two week increments, four times per year. They're fifteen dollars for each two week, you could use your two weeks now, and two months from now, use another two weeks, or you can use all eight weeks at one time, depending on how you want to, to do that. When you have multi-unit, a lot of times that can become filled with signs, if everyone's doing it at the same time. Particularly if they're just placing the signs, and they're not coming into the township and actually applying like they're supposed to. And I'm not going to get into ordinance enforcement, I'm going to leave that up to ordinance enforcement to address those issues, but um, that, that's what, you know, that's where our discussions that we have had, that if you have a reader board, we know there shouldn't be any temporary signs there.
I think the exception maybe would be to have a grand, allow a grand opening sign, because I want the business to start off well, and if people can find it, then that will boost right off the bat.
We'll discuss that too.
I know, I saw that was part of, one of the things in here too. It's a very detailed ordinance.
What, how are you addressing the flag signs currently? Or the ordinance? Because those are temporary signs.
They are temporary signs. I, I hate to speak for the ordinance enforcement department, but if there haven't been complaints about it, our concern with those is making sure at this point, because we don't address it in our ordinance, they're not permitted by ordinance, but you, you do know that we are complaint based. So, um, if they're in a safe area, what we don't want is sliding down, moving forward, and creating a obstruction of view for passing cars or distractions, we've just been letting those go for right now, and plan to address it, I know that Damon has said that that is one of the signs that he wants to, because those signs, right now, the tallest sign that we permit by ordinance in any zoning district is seven feet. Those, those flag signs are well over seven feet in height, so.
So Damon said he doesn't want them at all? Is that what you were just saying, I'm sorry?
No, I'm not saying, he wants us to address those in this ordinance, whether we're going to permit something. I believe that he feels, and again, I'm, this would have to be verified with him, that if we are going to permit signs like that, it should be something where they're out during the day and removed at night and brought out daily, only because they're not permitted by ordinance, but if it's something we're going to consider. And I believe he went through the community and looked at the signs, and I believe there were over forty businesses that had illegal signs.
Well, in schools, I don't call that a business, but.
At the ordinance enforcement, but they were asked to, um, just take a look. So they just drove and take, took a look.
Only got forty-three businesses, so forty of them.
So when, when they were asked to do so, they just wanted to see, you know, how many violations are we experiencing that um, might be, we're taking a look at this, and how we notify, because when you have a multi-tenant building, we have to notify the owner of the structure, the landlord is the one that gets, they should be conveying to their tenants what the ordinance allows in the way of signage, what they are permitted and not permitted to do. I don't know if they're not communicating with their tenants, or, or just allowing them to do what they want. But when the township writes a violation, it has to go to the tenant, or, excuse me, the landlord, the owner of the property. And then they have to make contact with their tenant, so.
I'm not as, I, I don't oppose them at all, I think that they serve a purpose, but I'm not as opposed, if I, if at all, to the multi-unit ones, I'm opposed to the single unit ones that put out three, four, five, six of them. You know, they line them up along the road, I mean, that's just a little ridiculous, if you ask me, that, that is a sight, vision, whatever you wanna call it, problem, I, I think, and they're, you're, if they're at a corner, and you're trying to turn the corner, and there's five of those signs, I just think, and same way at the school, I say the same thing about the school, they put up several on one school property. I mean, people don't read several, they read one, so just put up one, I'm not, I'm not opposed to having them, I do think they need to be regulated, and we have to come up with some provisions for those regulations, I don't wanna eliminate them, but um, I think having more than one.
What about a camel with a message board, is that okay?
That would be good, yeah. As long as you walk behind and clean up the mess, like your dog.
Just don't step in the exhaust, Nancy. Well, we, that's one of your problem real quick, didn't we?
I have, um, kinda moving on, um, this part that says, no sign shall be located higher than lowest point of the roof attached. I don't see a problem if you have a gable roof putting your sign within the gable. Um, I know it's not to the lowest point, or the two lowest points of the roof meet, but, yeah.
Uh, what we're finding now, the new Seacor Sterns structure, where you have, you have an established roofline, but now the designs, just the architectural design that's out there right now, we have taller faces, the facade is, in some areas, much taller than the base roofline, so, someone came in, like Arby's, they actually complied with their ordinance, but they came in with the hat, and they wanted to utilize that entire, and when you go by, you'll notice what I'm talking about, that entire area in front of their, well, they did come in, they put, made Arby's smaller, they brought it down, it's not that it looks bad, but I mean, those are the things that we're finding that might be um, some places that we might want to allow those considered, I, I'm not saying might.
Doesn't affect anybody.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, you know, it's just, it's a topic for discussion now, are there instances where maybe a larger sign would be more aesthetically appealing than limiting it to the height of the, when you have this structure above.
I guess I didn't even think of those type of roofs, I was thinking your standard gable roof and.
And, and we do, we do address the gable ends in this, Berry Bagel came in. And because they have a gable, um, they did come in and seek a sign waiver on the west side of the structure, to allow them to be above, because they did have that gable end look, and because of the sign of their design, that was narrower and taller, it was aesthetically appealing, and they were granted that waiver on that particular.
I did notice the Arby's sign today. And I thought that was not proportional, I thought it was small.
Yeah.
It looked like they put a small sign up there, either on the face of the building, right, up high?
Yes.
Yeah.
But they kept it below the, the established roofline, which.
But just the size of it.
Those are the areas now that we're finding, and do you have any others that you're thinking of?
It is also calculated though, by the width of the unit, not actually the wall from end to end, it's actually whatever their unit size is. So that is why the length of the sign, Karen is expressing where they, height of the um, sign is where they wanted to include the um, rendering with the hat that Arby's is known for, but also.
I didn't see the hat.
It's not there.
And they also complied, because this board did allow them, the two signs, the one which would not have been permitted without being.
On the backside.
No, on the east side of the building. And so there is a second.
With the drive-through?
No.
I didn't notice that one, but I did, I mean, that stood out, that it was smaller than.
And by our calculation, we would have taken the hat and calculated that as part of the signage, rather than an icon or a logo.
True square footage.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like a lot of that's just the, the, the verbiage that's used on that, I mean, it seems like it can be tweaked to be the, you know, uh, front facade, uh, it, not extending past the front facade of the building, um, cause I, I interpret it as they just don't want anything large going over the top to block the roofline, if you will, so. Cause we do have parapet walls, that sometimes are four foot, and they're gonna be a lot taller than the um, than the, the roofline itself, so, it, it seems like, I mean, that makes sense to me, I think it just needs to be cleaned up at that point.
Maserance, Gerth's, have that, that very type of. Yeah, liquor cabinet.
Right, as long as it doesn't extend past that parapet, so we can word it.
Mansared roofs, roofs are the ones that we would have the difficulty with, because if you have a mansored roof that come, where the roof comes down, down, maybe just above the door, putting a, you're actually putting a roof mounted sign, so, I mean, we do have some of those, which is okay, we can, we can, we can address, you know, take care of those, but if you wanted to put a wall sign on the front of your building, rather than putting it on the roof, you really would have no room, so, you know, there are just some things, and there are going to be things we can't avoid, because designs are changed all the time.
That's like that building next to Maggie's, that roof.
What about sidelines and that, is that something you can't do now, or did they just do that back when?
Sidelines in the shingles?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's really not permitted by ordinance, but it, they, they knew a roofer at the time, so it worked out nicely.
And he has some extra shingles.
One thing about that. He just moves some extra colors, wouldn't, and it spelt sidelines, I get it.
About that Arby's sign, if you look at the unit, it's probably proportional, but it's a, it's a wide area, and there's not another one next to it, once the.
Not yet.
Just so, the next one does the same thing, it'll look all right, and the whole parking lot was full of this building stuff. It was just that, that just sign just jumped out at me.
On multiple units, um, as Jody was saying, we do calculate on the width of the unit, um, fifty square feet, and you can calculate eighty percent of the width of the unit, whichever is less, so, and the, the height is permitted is two and a half feet.
But what, what, what happened to the monument sign? But what, what, what happened to the monument sign?
What happened to the monument sign?
Are they not required to have a monument that would be down low, not up high?
They meet the, the seven feet, they, they came in, they're, they're no more than seven feet in height. You're talking about the monument sign at Arby's?
No, I mean the sign on, on the store, on the business, above the door.
The monument sign would be that that's on the corner?
Yeah, I didn't see that one, but I, I didn't see that one. I just saw that one and I, I.
They can have two?
They can have a wall sign.
Okay.
Planning Commission, when they came in, as Jody said, allowed for the second wall sign on the east end. Did not like the wall sign that they were going to have on the rear of the structure because we felt, Planning Commission felt that that was actually not on their own unit. So told them that they could work out how they want to identify their drive-through through other types of signage, rather than attaching something to the wall of the structure. So they complied, they came in and complied with the requirements and what was permitted. And then they also put the monument sign up and have the individual inserts for all the units.
I didn't see that, but like I said, it was all filled with working in there.
It's starting to look nice now. I noticed they, they put their landscaping in, they just got their C of O. So they are supposed to be opening, I believe, end of this week, next week now?
Did you ask me a question, I'm sorry?
No, I was just thinking about Arby's.
No dinner, did he?
No, before the structure was up, it, it, I don't even think they were to the Planning Commission. Arby's was calling us about getting their sign made for their location. And we had to explain to them, Jody had to explain to them, there is no structure. They haven't even been through site plan approval, but they already knew they were moving in and they were trying to design their sign for the building. So it was nice to see it finally go up.
They were under contract, huh?
Parking now, they've been parking over there at Burger King, so.
And that was, Burger King did, did agree to allow them to park over there while they were working, so. I expect Burger King will probably be the next one to come in, go through a renovation. We had Wendy's, now we have McDonald's, Burger King will probably follow. And Tim Hort- oh, and Tim Hortons did too. I don't know if you're ready to move on?
Yes.
The grand open and the weekly event signs, this has been a topic of discussion with the ordinance enforcement and planning department for quite a while now. Grand opening signs, what we would consider temporary signs, we would like to maybe consider allowing a new business that's coming into the community to have a grand opening sign. We'd still like to have them certainly come in and make sure that it meets the requirements. We don't want somebody just coming in and putting something up. But allow them to have a grand opening sign for X amount of time, free of charge, not charge them to do so, just allow them to have grand opening signs of welcome to the community. The weekly event signs, we haven't had too much of this now, but sometimes we have a, a business. And off the top of my head, one we think of is Pizza Primo. Always had two for Tuesdays, they always had those signs, two for Tuesdays. We don't have anything in our ordinance that would allow someone to come in and seek a sign once a week for, for a year. Ours are two-week increments, four times a year. So we thought, well, maybe that would be something that we might want to consider too, for other businesses.
Every Wednesday at the zoo.
There, there you go. So, and wanted to see, you know, maybe what you guys thought of that, if you could think of anything else that might be helpful for new businesses coming in. We just want to make sure that if you put a banner sign up, I know the one that says "Now Hiring" over at the Seacor Sterns is kind of.
Collapsing.
Yes. We just want to make sure they're safe, out of the road right of way, but allow them to have it. Because we, we will get calls every now and then. You know, we're a new community, we'd like to put a grand opening sign up and then we have to tell them that they have to pay us to do so. So we were thinking maybe that might be something that we would want to consider. I'm going to skip over the waivers, go to BZA for the moment and go down to.
Excuse me, just a minute. The weekly event signs, does that include garage sales?
Garage sales are their own little category.
Weekly event, it's a weekly.
It is a weekly event. Garage sale signs are non-accessory signs. Technically, if you have a garage sale sign, it should only by ordinance be permitted on your parcel where you are holding your garage sale. We don't regulate them because they are non-exi- we have to remember that if I'm putting my garage sale sign up on the corner that Marty owns, that's his property, I'm putting my sign up on his property. So he owns it, it's a non-accessory sign.
He can take it down.
He can take it down.
Take it down, Marty.
But the thing is, actually, we have worked with people, ordinance enforcement have worked quite closely with people and we've actually had a lot better response. We still don't allow them on poll, the telephone polls. And, and in the corner clearance area, if it creates a visual clearance for making turns, keep them down two feet in height and remove them when your garage sale's done. I don't know how we can regulate non-accessory signs. The only place they're permitted is in industrial. But I think that they have gotten a handle on those, so.
I guess my point is, if they're not considered a weekly event sign, then it should, we're talking about cleaning up language here. And it should be stipulated exactly in that portion that, that a garage sale's not considered in the weekly event. Because people, again, reading it, I'm not a garage sale person, but if I were, I could read that and typically, my garage sale is a weekly event. So, I mean, I just think that it should be stipulated that it does not include garage sales, if that's the way the board wants to.
Okay, so weekly event signs, we're thinking, I'm thinking more businesses.
I know you're thinking, but is it strictly in commercial zoning? I mean, I just think, it should be, we're talking about cleaning up language. It should be totally understandable by the reading public, not just attorneys, what it means.
Maybe we have to add that language, that it's not.
Maybe just put business, business weekly.
I mean, you stop and think about real estate signs too. Real estate signs are the same way. If you have a, a home for sale.
House for sale.
In, in a subdivision, unless you're driving through that subdivision, you're not going to see it. So in many cases, you'll find it at the, you know, have a real estate sign at the entrance. Those are non-accessory signs as well, private property. So, I mean, there are many instances where we might find those types of signs. Those are the two I can think of right now.
Since nineteen nine, you know, I moved up here in nineteen eighty. A person on Adler has had a weekly garage sale, every week. You know, it's going on, estate sale one week.
It's a business, that's a business.
Yeah, that would, it should be. But, nobody complains.
You could complain, no, why?
That was it, I just wanted to make mention of the garage sale.
I don't know. I don't know. I think there is, there is something limiting the number of days you can have a garage sale, so it's not a, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just would like to speak to the R M, R M E, our, the mobile home park setback requirement for signs. I don't know why, I don't know, maybe Marty or Dennis knows why. We have, in all other zoning districts, sign setbacks are out of the road right of way. In your R M, R M E, mobile home park, we have a twenty-five-foot setback from the road right of way. Would you like to explain why?
It's kind of related to a lawsuit.
Oh.
Yeah, I agree, that setback should be the same as all over.
In many cases, R M E, you have first responders that are, you have a new first responder, you'd like to see the sign not twenty-five feet off the road too, I mean.
So it's fifty-eight feet, basically, from the center?
Yes, thirty-three and twenty-five, yes, fifty-eight feet from the center of the road. We have had a couple that have come in. Hickory Bridge came in on Lewis Avenue and asked to have a sign waiver. Vibrant Life actually got two on both of theirs. The, the sign was more visible on Jackman Road, but the one on Sterns Road was tucked back in and unless you knew that facility was there, it was hard to see. So they moved it up, but I would like to see that eliminated. I, I really don't see any reason. The apartments, we require them to keep the signs twenty-five feet back off the road right of way. Bainbridge and that, so I'd like to see that brought in. There's really no difference with them than there is if we have a subdivision or if we have a P U D, unless Marty can think of anything.
Karen, which one are you saying?
The R M, R M E and the mobile home park, the twenty-five-foot setback requirement.
All three of those are twenty-five.
All three of those require a twenty-five-foot setback from the road right of way. And I just don't know the reason for it.
Might as well have a sign, you're going to be by it sitting so far back.
So that's the other one that I would. Now, waivers going to the BZA, that's open for discussion.
No discussion, it's going to the BZA. There's no point in bringing it here. I mean, really, we are not a board that is set up for waivers and we, the BZA is. That's what their job is. I don't, I mean, I just keep kidding guys about no discussion. I mean, it only makes sense to go to the BZA.
Okay, now I have one question. We have allowed, when we have site plan, to come in. For instance, Arby's, when they came in and they wanted to have that signage and the Planning Commission can make a decision or a determination at that time. Excuse me. We, we could see where this would work, but no for that. Are we going to eliminate all consideration from the planning department? Because in many cases, when they come in with the site plan, they bring their signage in at the same time and sometimes they don't comply. And the Planning Commission can grant waivers or tell them no at that time. So are we now not going to, would not consider any signs at Planning Commission and site plan approval and send it to the BZA?
Why would that be, excuse me, go ahead.
I was gonna say, it's probably part of the site plan, so it's included, part of the site plan, we can.
Would the, would the Planning Commission, them be allowed to grant waivers if it's part of a site plan?
I, I would say so. I would say that's part of the overall site plan. Outstanding, just the individual sign waiver would go to the BZA. See any challenges on that.
I kind of disagree. I think if they bring the sign sheets in with the plan, they should meet the requirements of the ordinance. And if they don't, then we don't approve that point and then they go on to the BZA. So I don't think the Planning Commission needs to be granting waivers that the initial site plans did. That's just my opinion, so.
I agree with that. Otherwise, you're going to have two bodies and applicants are going to be forum picking which body they prefer to get a waiver from and bring it in with their, the question or the waiver in with their initial application or bring it later. So I think if there are waivers, they should be with one body, whatever body that is. But primarily, we should have the ordinance designed objectively where they can meet the standards and they don't need a waiver. And then the planning department, when they review the site plan, finds that it meets the standards or doesn't.
I, I agree with that. I think we make it a little bigger, we do square footage, not if it's round or oval, you're not making it square. And back into some of these and see about the structure on the outside. Because the biggest complaint, when somebody comes at the sign, they don't have enough room to do what they want, without making it too big. What is that square footage, I don't know. Where do we at, thirty-two square foot right now?
For residential, fifty square, fifty square feet for commercial.
What does residential want a sign for, just for the housing?
Churches.
Oh, churches?
Churches, any daycare, we allow for other uses other than residential.
What would be one in residential? The sign going out front of the place, like a subdivision? Other than that, there wouldn't be much, would there?
Signs in that type of residential, what I'm talking about is daycares are allowed in residential zoning districts. Churches are allowed in residential zoning districts, so we limit those to thirty-two square feet. If you have a, an entrance sign, there are other allowances for greater size in the entranceway. So the signage might be thirty-two square feet, but they can have structures that are more decorative and larger than what would typically be permitted as an entranceway to a subdivision.
The one problem of making the, changing the qualifications of the size is that we got X amount out there right now. And if we make it too much bigger, it is going to be noticeable. You're going to have the old monument sizes and the new monument sizes.
Well, you have that now with the signs up in the air, right?
Those were still trying to bring into compliance. Those will start, where, in many of the instances that came to the Planning Commission, some of those were in the village overlay districts. Temperance was the first village overlay district that, that ordinance was written. And because of the nature of the area and how much room they had on those particular parcels in Temperance, they were limited to four feet in height, forty square feet. Well, when you move to Lambertville, the parcels are larger, they have more room. And Seacor Road is forty-five miles per hour. Downtown Temperance is twenty-five miles per hour. But they didn't change the sign requirements. So they were limited to forty square feet, four feet in height. So take a look at how many of those now are larger. And it's, and they were granted, but they have larger lots, they have the room to do it. Some of them in Temperance don't even have the room to put a monument sign. When the Sunoco station came in, they had no room to put a monument sign. The corner, to be in a corner clearance. So they, I think we listened to that three times when they came in to allow them to have the raised sign. So when someone came up to the stoplight at Temperance and Lewis Avenue, they could at least see under it before they started out because there was just no room to put a monument sign. So there are some instances where there just is no room for a monument sign in Temperance. And we do allow in the village overlay for more flexibility in signage than what we allow in other areas outside of all the villages.
Yeah, the ordinance for the overlay districts were written by the committees that organize those districts, it wasn't us, so. Don't blame us.
I didn't know if anybody had any other input or something that we should take further look at. I mean, I know we have others, but.
I, I have one thing I'd like to address and I mentioned it to you, but you left it up on purpose, I think. I'm just kidding. And then I'd also like you to comment or talk about the timing because the sign ordinance has been reviewed for ten, maybe twenty years and we need to bring it to fruition. There needs to be a completion to this. And I know it's ongoing, we could, you know, be altering things down the road, but we need to set a timeline, this has to be a priority, if you ask me. On page, I don't know what page it is, it's two-two-one-six-point-one-seven. It has to do with the grace period. I'm not happy with seven years and we, this was, seven years was at that time. If it stays in there, what purpose does it have? I, I just think that we should eliminate the whole, a seven-year grace period shall begin, which shall mean that within seven years, the sign shall be made to comply. Well, you know, this is long, long past seven years and we're not making them comply.
If they make a change, that's when the timer starts. So you don't have to comply until they make a change or, or want to put a different sign in.
For example, the Wendy's sign?
I know.
When they changed that face, correct me if I'm wrong, now they're in that seven-year window.
That's why McDonald's does not change in theirs, because then they would be, in seven years, have to change.
All they gotta do is put a light bulb in.
Seven-year grace period shall begin, which means, which shall mean that within seven years, the sign shall be made to comply with the non-existing provision. Where, where does it say starts, I mean, they can have it forever?
Yes.
If, if someone comes in, for instance, we had one that we considered, the innovation cultivation, we gave him the option to either bring that sign. We gave him the option to either bring that sign down into compliance now. If you put that sign in and you get that waiver, it's only going to be for seven years. Once you make a change to a non-conforming sign, we give them the option, bring it in now, or we'll let you go through the depreciation period of seven years, and then you have to bring that sign into compliance. It begins, this clock starts ticking, once someone makes a change to, whether it be an insert or a whole sign.
Okay, that's my point, though. I don't, I don't like the seven years. Why can't, when they come in to change the face, they be made to, to change to comply then? Why are we giving seven years? I don't, what's the, what's the rationale? What's, is it, you know, something to do with the Bible, seven years, or?
It does.
Is it? Who's Bible, not mine?
I think, I think the reason that we did that was because they have an investment in the sign. If it's fairly new sign, and that's why the seven-year amortization comes into play. We figured by the end of the seventh year, the sign is not worth anything, so they might as well replace it. See what I mean?
I do see what you mean. I still don't agree with that.
A lot of people buy a building and don't know their sign isn't... The cultivation people didn't know, I know that. You know, they bought this thing, and I'll say, wait a minute, that's illegal now? They're looking at, the Realtors not telling them that.
Marty, I mentioned this once before. I asked you the question, whether that, when the owner signs that piece of paper, starting to seven years, I asked you whether that follows the property or the owner?
Follows the property. It's a fixture to the land.
Is that spelled out in the ordinance?
I don't know.
Probably should be. Because that's what happens, is they sell the building, and the new owner doesn't know about it.
And that's what happened to the people that bought that structure or that building. They didn't realize that the previous owner had signed that seven-year waiver. And then they inherited it with the property. And so when they came in, they said, you'd have to bring your sign into compliance.
Okay, I still don't like the seven years. I don't think that there's any purpose, I, you know...
I think it was because of the initial investment of buying the property and wanting to utilize the sign. They said, we'll give you seven years, too. Once you put that new insert in, it will depreciate over seven years. The value will then be at where you can replace the sign.
And maybe if they had to fix it right away, they would never do any maintenance or redo it just because they would have that expense. At least over seven years, they can have a little time.
Some have elected to do so, bring it down. They say, well, why do I want to spend X amount of dollars on this huge insert? I mean, it's less than purchasing the sign. But, you know, we can keep the sign. The sign complies with the sign size. All we have to do is worry about putting it, the cabinet, in a base or on a base. And a lot of them will bring them down just by doing that, and they do comply. So it just all depends on, you know, what they have to work with. Some won't work because of the size.
So what about the time limit? Don't look down, Marty.
Time limit or the time line?
Seven years? The sign years? Are you talking about the side, seven years?
No, I'm not going to give up on the seven years. I still don't see that.
Oh, time limit, I'm getting it done.
I mean, you can afford a new sign if you can afford to start a new shop.
He said seven years.
It might not be a new shop. It could be a shop that was 20 years old.
I know, but if you're getting, if you're, I just don't believe they can't afford a new sign.
We can.
Yeah, yes, you can.
Well, we also need to do some further research, I think, as a planning department, ordinance enforcement department, before we have our attorneys, let, give them good direction on what we're seeking from...
So are you saying in my lifetime, or are you, are you saying, you know, by six months? I mean, I'd like to hear some definition of, because this is what's happened. I mean, we, we talked about the sign ordinance in the 90s, you know. We, we can't just keep talking about it, we have to do something.
1986.
86, see?
And we've amended it since then, portions of it.
I agree to some extent. The problem was, we didn't really spend enough quality time on the original ordinance, and we, we got a bad product. And so I don't think we need necessarily rush through this revision, because it's a complicated ordinance.
I, I mean, I don't think we got a bad product because of the attorneys. I think we got a bad product because as a group, which is what I'm talking about right now, we didn't dedicate a continual concerted effort towards bringing it to fruition. And so that's what I plan on doing, browbeating until we do. I'm a good nagger, right, Bob? I'm a good nagger.
I, I have to say that, you know, I don't know how to write a novel unless somebody gives me the plot.
Absolutely.
And there was no decisions made tonight, so you can't send me home to say, okay, write it up.
Well, I, I don't think it was a decision that we were expecting.
Right. It's just, I don't know how you put a timeframe on it until we give a receiving direction with the nuts and bolts to construct it.
Well, I thought there was good discussion tonight that I'm sure Karen and Jody picked up on. They're the ones that have said they're going to do the research. So I wasn't, I really wasn't putting that on you, Marty, or the attorney group.
Yes, you were.
No, no. Although, when it finally gets out of Karen and Jody's hands, then we need to know that the attorney's office has time to make it a priority as well. So I guess that's what I'm, I'm just indicating here. And I'm sure it'll get back to your whole group, because Tom's a little touchy about messing with the ordinances. But, but, I mean, they're just, there's too many issues that the ordinance department, enforcement department has. So we do need to address it. It's just, it's just no, no ifs, ands, or buts, or whatever.
If we may, we would like to get with the ordinance enforcement department, go through this ordinance. I know that Trudy had some things that she was looking at with political signs. I mean, I think that we need more areas that we have to address other than what was just identified this evening. So I think that if we can get us together, maybe meet, I don't know if anyone else is interested, maybe meeting with us in, you know, sometime, you know, short meeting and going over this piece by piece and seeing, you know, maybe this is, and then, once we get some, some strike through, some added language, bringing it back to the planning commission and then having another discussion on it. I think that that's probably the best way for us to approach it. So I don't know if anyone's interested, or...
I'd be happy to me...
Somebody said seven years, I heard.
Any Monday, Wednesday, or Friday. I, I'd be happy. Just let me know when you're going to discuss it, and I'll try to be there. But I do think that we need to address Trudy's questions about the political signs before this whole thing is completed then, because that's coming upon us. 2020 has three, maybe four elections, and they start in March, maybe, if we have presidential primaries. So those things have to, you know, be addressed. And I, I mean, there's no local people running in March, but it could be all kinds of Trump, Biden, whatever, Kay, whatever her name is, of the all, you know, it could be all kinds of presidential signs going up out there that, that need to be regulated. And so I think that we should address Trudy's issues.
And right now, I believe our ordinance does not have any conflict with the state and federal regulations. I think we're, we're good with what we have. But if she had anything that she, I know that she met with us to discuss, you know, we might have to...
Where is that?
Re-act 45.
Where is that? Oh, well, that, isn't that where you live?
Do you know what 45 means?
Yes, I do. We, we need to get fingerprints on that.
All right, so we're going to do a individual...
Go ahead and finish your sentence.
No, I was about ready to wrap us up, so...
Oh, all right. You know, you had made mention of possibly inviting other people in for some comments. And Joe made a good point earlier. Every time Gary Harrell comes in, one of his sentences is, "It kills our creativity." With these nice pictures that we have here, if we have another meeting and he's got some ideas or suggestions, maybe it's worth his input. Obviously, he does the bulk of the local signs for everyone, and would probably know best. And I know he probably works Toledo pretty heavy, Sylvania. So he might be someone to consider his opinion or suggestions.
And if anyone's interested, let you guys know that you want to go through the ordinance line by line, and we'll have this done in the next seven years. Sound good? Do we need a motion for that?
Would that be a, would that be an email?
Pardon me?
Would that be an email when you're going to do the walkthrough?
Oh, when we're going to meet? We'll shoot out an email to see. We just have to make sure that we don't have four, or don't have four. We can only have no more than three, right? No more than three planning commission members at times, who are doing work.
Discussing. Anybody can sit there and listen. Just can't discuss. It's the truth. People think you can't be in the room, but you can be in the room.
All right, with that said, we will move on to section eight, public comment. Seeing that we have none, we will move on to new information. Karen?
Nothing at this time.
All right, any staff or commission comment? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Me adjourned.